For me to get out and get some.
I make no kind of my agenda.
I tell you.
Oh, nice.
So I have.
Probably have four?
No, made four.
Oh, maybe more.
I couldn't print. My printer didn't work. The printer up town wouldn't work off my laptop.
What I did.
So we can print it out for you guys on the agenda.
Well. To Kelly's.
That's what Josh is trying to do right now.
I had him by the top of my head.
Is Mr. Phillips.
There's only one guy who's always assigned. Who's a resident.
I had twenty-five and it really.
There's only one in the school office.
Which is so.
Um.
Right.
That's all right. You can just go back to her.
Yeah, that's why I let him.
So forth.
Let him know.
There's two of them in the.
Get up there as quick as possible. Cause I don't know that without him being there, they're just gonna take their.
Yep, she won't sign my paper.
She won't.
She's not a fan, man.
I don't think so.
Is she not a fan of you or a fan of me here on Tuesday?
Well, if you talk to me.
Well, she does her thing today about me today.
I may be copy of it, just know my name.
She like to come in and get paisley cause I'm home.
They're just new for now.
Not working.
What was wrong with paisley?
She had a dentist on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it is four thirty-one. Our call is meeting room. Please stand for the buzzer. Turn to the left. Flag is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Sims, we need one more chair for Josh. We're gonna go, you're gonna go in that chair.
I'm taking that chair.
You're taking that chair. He's taking that chair. Josh can have.
But I like the green.
That's your eyes.
And your sweat.
Wrong call, please.
Mayor Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Richmond.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Engard.
Here.
Mr. Soltis. Ms. Boeckrich.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, excuse me, Mr. Soltis.
Second.
Here's a motion on the floor. In a second, excuse me, Mr. Soltis, is there any discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis. Oops, sorry. Hang on here. Ms. Boeckrich.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I apologize. Our Mr. Phillips is not here yet. Did he text you back?
Something.
No.
Okay, um. He was under the impression, um, the meeting was at five. Apologize. Hopefully he gets here in time. Did you want to fill us in on anything before he gets here, Matt? Or do you just want to come back to it if he shows up in time and?
I think on the financial side, we should wait to, to Gabe gets here. But he's, uh, he represents Meter, which is one of our current portfolios. He's got a presentation. He, uh, you know, that he was preparing, uh, this, this what I have here at the meeting before. It was a previous from where we met, one-on-one. And, uh, you know, this seemed to do a nice job. Uh, Meter also, they administer Star Ohio. So that's, that's an advantage there. Makes it easily, an easy transition back and forth. If the council decides to move money from Star Ohio over to Meter, with the idea being interest rates going down to try to lock in a higher rate. But, uh, other than that, I'm gonna wait for, you know, Gabe's presentation on that.
And then, um, Jones is our third, who's our third? So we got Star Ohio, Meter, and then.
SJS, which is Charles Swab. That portfolio roll over two million, I believe.
Yeah, um, but Meter's the one that performed the worst for us. Am I correct in saying that? Um, I don't wanna say, that's probably a bad choice of words. Didn't perform as well as the rest of them.
Is that on percentage wise?
Return or a return?
Return, yeah.
We'll wait just a second, see if that's Mr. Phillips. And I won't carry on if it's not. All right, so we'll, we'll come back to, um, rowing number three of the agenda. If that's okay with council, if there's not, if that's okay with, with you guys. Better women. Um, okay, so the, um, Mr. Francisco has making, has made a recommendation that we, he would ask that we would entertain hiring Andrew Finkenbinder as a firefighter. Um, the date of hire would be four twenty-nine. Who's that?
Never seen him before.
That might be him. Uh, twenty twenty-five as a volunteer firefighter, um, and a maximum pay of twenty-two fifty per run. Minimum fifty, they get fifteen dollars, maximum twenty-two fifty. Is there, is?
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion, please.
Sub move.
No, thank you.
Is there, there's a motion in the second? Is there any discussion in hiring Mr. Andrew Finkenbinder?
I was just gonna say, he, he has his training already, so.
Just gonna ask.
Then, uh.
Do you know anything about him, Mr.?
Yeah, yes, uh, he was a firefighter at Van Lou and moved into town, so he's.
Really?
One of the.
So he came up and solicited and said, hey, I'd like to be on a different spot. I'd like to be on the, for Baltimore. Wonderful. So there, there's, uh, where does he live at? Where do you? Is that, is that him?
Well, it's family.
Yeah.
He, he did?
Yeah, he's in ours.
Yeah.
That's why I made the motion.
All right.
Without, without knowing all the information.
So there's a motion. Any, any other discussion on this gentleman? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrich?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Here you go. That's for your records. All right, if we can back up, Mr. Gabe Phillips from Meter Investments. Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the floor, floor is yours.
Okay, perfect. I brought, uh, a print off here for, for members of the council to share copies of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate you all taking the time to, to have me up here today to update on the investment program. Want to check in real quick, time-wise. How long do we wanna, do we wanna talk here on the investment program?
Well, I have to go to work at seven o'clock.
Not seven minutes, seven minutes ago.
Seven minutes. We'll keep it brief. Uh, so Matt asked me to, after a couple of meetings that we've had here this spring, come in and update council, uh, on kind of the goings-on in the investment account. So I put together here today in my materials, what would essentially be a full-blown strategy update meeting with the finance officer. I'll keep things a little more high-level today.
So please don't give us like, like, let him, make sure we know what, what, right? We don't wanna rush through this thing.
Perfect.
We wanna make sure that we understand, but, but we don't need the long version, but.
Yep.
But, but don't skip if you need.
Sounds good. Sounds good. We'll save time on, on the economic update question.
First of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to come in here, right?
Absolutely.
That's why I don't want you to rush through this thing.
Absolutely.
You put some time into putting this together on our behalf and, and, and you taking the time to come and, and go us in, Matt thinks that it's very important, so. Floor is yours.
Absolutely. Perfect. Well, so I'll start off here, the first two pages of the packet, just to kind of level set a little more background on Meter. I'm new to the village. However, the village has had a relationship with Meter for a number of years. So I'm new, I've now taken over start of the year, basically, the village's account. Obviously, Matt also being fairly new in this role, so I thought, let's kind of give a little more history on Meter, just as a firm in general. So high-level items here, we are an SEC-registered investment advisor. Important distinction there being that we are held to a fiduciary responsibility to the village, different than what you would have in, say, a brokerage relationship than it would be to our business model. Idea there being that we're doing what's in the best interest for the village in the long run. Size-wise, just a little context on Meter. Uh, we're the second largest in the country offering these services. My team and I work exclusively with public entities. I'm based here in Ohio, but we do have a, a national presence now at this point. Over four hundred public entities, over a hundred and fifty billion dollars in assets under advisement. So we have a, a pretty deep experience and extensive, uh, knowledge base in this subject matter. We've been in business now for fifty-one years, Meter has. Our public funds team has been solely dedicated in this space for over thirty years now. The following page there is a list of services. So again, just kind of level setting here, bringing everyone up to speed on everything that Meter touches in the investment program, cause it's certainly more than the village has some money to invest. I'll give Matt some ideas on how to invest it. So just working down the list here quickly, not gonna read it word for word for you all, but we routinely are reading and updating the investment policy. That is our governing document for how the village can invest. Um, so when I took over the account, met Matt, that was one of the things I did was read the investment policy, make sure we had a good understanding of it. We're obviously doing that just to kind of understand the ins and outs, but also make sure everything's up to code, because although not very often, the higher revised code does get updated every once in a while and that, that will govern what you're allowed to do in your investment policy.
Is, is there been, and I apologize, but is there anything that's changed that made a dramatic change?
No, no, no recent material changes, but that remains, you know, a piece of our business model to make sure that we're always reviewing. And then you have a copy that dates back to the start of our relationship. You have a copy of a document that says Meter will follow that policy when we're making investment changes. Second thing on there, and really, really important, I think will, will govern a lot of our conversation today, is cash flow analysis and modeling. So like I had said, we're much more than just, you have some money to invest, let's put it into market. The ideal version of my relationship with any one of my clients should feel like I sit on the same side of the table as you, that I'm an extension of your staff here at the village. With that being said, I want to have a deep understanding of where you're at cash flow-wise. Where are we at on projects that might be coming up? Do we have any large expenditures in the near future? Very big windfalls lately where there's more cash than we would normally have. And then that's an ongoing conversation then, as Matt and I meet, you know, quarterly, annually, to update each other on, on what's going on in the investments. And then building a strategy then that's based on the local cash flow situation here at the village. Couple other things there, monthly reporting and review. So we've just gone live with a, a, in my opinion, very impressive online portal, bringing us up into the twenty-first century a little bit more. So you get monthly reports from us, you get annually reports, annual reports from us. We now also have a pretty state-of-the-art, up-to-the-date website where you can get in. It's fully Meter branded. Have just up-to-the-minute information on, on what's going on in the investment account. So, uh, a lot, much more user-friendly and I think a lot more power in, in Matt's seat to have, you know, access at your fingertips to that information. Last thing I want to make sure I touch on here is banking and custody. So one of those components of our business model of being an investment advisor to the village is we help facilitate a custody relationship for the village's assets and money. So Meter never physically touches your money or your assets. The village utilizes US Bank for that service. So when you see Meter, you can think US Bank in terms of where your dollars and your assets actually live. So just an important distinction there to keep in mind. You'll probably, if you're getting into the weeds of our services, you'll see the US Bank account is where your investments are held. We facilitate that relationship, but at the end of the day, the account is in the village's name. All we have the ability to do is direct trades for the money that sits in that account. Matt is the only one who can actually control cash in, cash out, things like that. All right, so like I said, always gonna touch on an economic update. This is the, the area tonight that I'll, I'll keep things brief, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, just of what's Meter following right now in the markets? What are we paying attention to? Um, and then how does that ultimately play into the investment decisions that we're making? So this page is kind of a, an intro to the rest of our, our topics here. And it's what's called the FIGI model of interest rates. So really, it's just an acronym for Fed policy, inflation, growth, deployment, and then ultimately the yields that are available in the marketplace for us as fixed income investors. So these are just high-level topics that are playing into where are interest rates at today? And then just helping shape our decisions or our models of where our interest rates headed in the future. Obviously, knowing that here, being a public entity, you're in a fixed income environment. And so the, the instruments that you have access to in the investment account are gonna correlate to what's available in terms of the overnight rate that the Fed sets and then the curve that responds there off of that. So three years out is our maximum, as illustrated in the investment policy. So zero to three-year rates in the marketplace determine what we're able to lock in from the, the village's investment account. So the following page there, page six, is just high-level. And this is where I'll really kind of spend the majority of our discussion on the economic side of things. Just an outlook of where we're at and then where we're headed on these components. So the Fed funds rate, the rate set by the Federal Reserve Board, like I said, that's where, that's kind of the jumping off point that then is a reference for interest rates in the market. The Fed funds rate has been at historically high levels coming into last year. The Fed, as some of you may know, cut rates ultimately four times last year, four quarter-point cuts. Since then, since December, we've been on kind of a hold pattern where the Fed has been in a wait-and-see type of position. And it seems very likely now that they're, they're getting closer and closer to more rate cuts. Um, if you look at what the market is predicting at the moment, it seems like June is, is really the best bet for the next interest rate cut and then probably there July after, if not. Ultimately, the Fed is forecasting at least two interest rate cuts this year. The market right now is forecasting three to four interest rate cuts and those are quarter-point cuts. So without getting, you know, into too much of a debate or trying to pull out a crystal ball, I think we can zoom out and we can say the general consensus is that rates are gonna continue to go down. And so in an environment like this, then our discussion really becomes what can we do about that? What can we do to lock in what we have while it's still here? Because interest rates are considered too high today and we know they are gonna go down from here. We can debate about when and how and how fast, but they're headed down. That's, that's the general consensus, barring any unforeseen circumstances or any, you know, unplanned events that happen in the general marketplace. Next piece there is inflation. So this is one of the components that's kept interest rates so high for so long. Kind of going back in time here as we look at what's happened in the last two or three years. The CPI reached, you know, over nine percent. That's what the majority of the news headline numbers were based off of. Uh, the PCE, which is the preferred measure of the Fed, a little lower than that. But inflation spiked and it spiked fast and it set the Fed off in increasing interest rates to this historically high level that we've been at for a number of months now. Since then, inflation's slowly coming back down. Ultimately, the goal is two percent. As we can see here, the recent, recent reading at two-point-four percent. So it's remaining to be kind of sticky. It's remaining to be a thorn in the side of the Fed. Um, but they're headed towards that two percent and they know that they can't hold rates, like I said, here forever. And so they're waiting patiently, but signs are saying that they're gonna start to cut again here soon as inflation is, in terms of momentum, headed in the right direction.
Is there been any, any kind of cut yet this year?
There haven't been any red cuts yet this year. They have met a few times. Like I said, May would be their next meeting. Doesn't seem like it's gonna, there's gonna be a cut in that meeting. June, just in terms of kind of where's the market betting right now? Seems like the highest likelihood. If not, then July being the first meeting where they cut. I will leave that with the caveat, though, that if there's one word to sum up markets this year, it's been uncertainty.
Certainty.
The news headlines can quickly sway expectations one way or the other, right? And a lot of this, you know, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it, right? The buzzword that everyone is gonna ask about, a lot of this hinges on tariffs and what ultimately is gonna happen in, in terms of putting tariffs into action. So a few weeks ago, the, you know, the widespread announcement of tariffs across the entire marketplace sent the markets into a bit of a shock. Uh, you know, the, the equity market slid. The, the fixed income market was a bit of a, a flight to safety there for a while, then a bounce down, then a bounce back up. But moving forward, you know, we've seen now pause on tariffs. I think it's no secret that this administration is using them as a bargaining chip and they'll probably continue to do so. And so the Fed's projections are given quarterly. So that projection of two basis cuts this year is kind of stable. That's why the market is in that position of three to four cuts this year. So we'll see in, in the next meeting when we get an updated set of projections from the Fed, if they have a, a different feeling now that they've seen this volatility come into the marketplace lately.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on to growth. Expectations for growth this year are to slow down. One of the main components, like I mentioned, um, you know, try not to abuse the word here tonight, is, is tariffs and ultimately what's gonna happen there with tariffs. Some other components of that being that, you know, the, the average consumer in the US right now is, is pretty strapped for cash. Savings levels were extremely high coming out of COVID. We've seen those basically depleted now at this point. Delinquencies on, on credit cards, auto, even homeowners are on the rise or at historical levels. So the consumer, who makes up a large portion of the economy, not able to contribute as much anymore. Also, expectations are for this administration to have less federal spending. And then, of course, like I had said, the uncertainty there that, of tariffs ultimately playing into the marketplace. Have expectations for quite a, a bit of a slowdown this year in economic growth. Unemployment is the other half of the Fed's dual mandates. So stable prices or inflation being the first half, the employment picture of the labor market being the second half. Today, unemployment is at historically a very low level, so four-point-two percent. Um, and that's the other reason that's allowed the Fed to stay at this level of high interest rates for so long, because they feel like they're not pushing too hard on the economy. They're not pushing the economy yet to a recession. Now, that's the other kind of hot-button issue for, for a debate. And again, we can, we can go all night on that topic and if I had a crystal ball, I'd tell you what I saw there. Um, but the Fed feels that they're not being, you know, they're not pushing too hard yet, but they know that they can't continue on this path for much longer. That four-point-two percent is up from recent numbers. It's, it's slowly trickled up. And there are some of those cracks in the foundation, uh, as of lately. And so, you know, we're seeing larger companies in the last year, first kind of freeze hiring, then starting to see some layoffs in the last few months. Especially when you start to look at different localities. I was just in Logan County last week and, and their local unemployment rate was in the fives. And so we're starting to see some communities that are being impacted by, you know, businesses closing down, businesses restricting their services. And so kind of that, that other piece there playing into the fact that rates can't stay this high for much longer and the Fed is well aware of that. Last thing there is yields. We'll take a look at a, a, a graph there to kind of show historically speaking where we're at, um, in terms of the marketplace. So high level there, you know, that really touched on everything that we're paying close attention to. I'll move through the next few pages, but these basically just put the, the points that I mentioned into, into pictures, into a graph to kind of further drive home those points. So the Fed funds graph here, this shows the market's expectations for where the overnight rate will be throughout the rest of this year. I think the main reason why that's gonna matter to our discussion with the village is that the overnight rate is what a vehicle like Star Ohio is tied to. So if expectations for the overnight rate are to drop very quickly moving forward, the Star Ohio rate is gonna continue to drop. It already has. You know, we've already lost a full percentage point or more in what we can earn in Star Ohio and, and we're anticipating that it will continue to slide down. It's gonna follow the, the Fed rate. Their long-term goal for the overnight rate is two and three-quarters, two-point-nine percent. So over the course of the next few months or years, Star will get down to that, you know, twos percentage point. Well, it's a great return right now. It has been for the last year or so. Like Dan, a large portion of our conversation is what's the appropriate amount then to leave in a vehicle that's highly susceptible to interest rate fluctuation? So this highlights that drop that's expected in the overnight rate throughout the rest of this year. Uh, the following page there takes a look at inflation. CPI, like I said, being the headline number that most of us are gonna see in the news. The PCE, the core PCE is the preferred measure of the Fed. Ultimately, though, like I had said, two percent is the goal there. We're at two-point-six as of the last PCE reading. It's headed in the right direction, but it remains sticky. Um, and that's really why the Fed is going to not commit to one set plan for interest rates moving forward, but they're gonna go meeting by meeting like they continue, like they have been, they'll continue to be that way. Um, and they'll wait for the day to come in, especially in this highly uncertain environment, like I mentioned. Uh, but it's headed in the right direction. A lot of progress has been made in the last two years, eighteen months. Um, and they know that they're, they're getting towards that two percent goal. Next page shows growth. Uh, so we can see, we came out of historically very high growth in twenty-twenty-four, actually quite a bit of a surprise to the upside in what was expected in terms of growth last year. Looking ahead, though, like I had mentioned for a few reasons, expectations for this year are to be, you know, quite a bit of a slowdown in growth. Positive trend line GDP growth would be three percent. So you can see here the quarterly numbers for twenty-five, definitely lower than that. And like I mentioned earlier, I won't repeat for a number of reasons, but across the marketplace here, many economists expecting a slowdown in growth throughout twenty-twenty-five. The employment piece, like I'd said, really an important, an important component of the Fed's decision-making. Two interesting factors here are just showing the unemployment rate on the top half. So full employment in the US is considered to be an unemployment rate of four and a half to five and a half percent. So we still remain under the lower bound of that range at four-point-two percent. And so looking at where we've been now for a number of months, we're sitting at forty-one consecutive months below the lower bound of a fully, fully employed market. And so statistically speaking, that's a very healthy labor market. And like I said, that's why the Fed has, has kept interest rates or, or one large reason why the Fed has kept interest rates this high for this long. Um, but they also know it's slowly trickling up, like I had said. This is one of the longest streaks dating back to just slightly after World War II. So, uh, extremely resilient labor market that we're seeing here. But again, there are some cracks in the foundation with Fed as well aware of that. This is surface level. If you dig deep underneath, there are some more alarming things like continuing unemployment claims. So an interesting kind of study there that the number of folks going on unemployment and staying on unemployment continues to rise and rise and rise. And so the Fed is well aware of the fact that that can become a problem in the long run. So underneath the surface, some of the things like that are, are being studied pretty heavily right now. This all plays into the yields that are available in the marketplace. So when we look across our entire horizon of what we can invest in, out to three years for the village, we're looking at what can we lock in then? And how does this relate, especially historically speaking, to what we've been able to lock in for the, for the portfolio? So we can see here on the far right-hand side, the two here being a, a key benchmark, um, especially for the village here, because it's very close to your weighted average maturity. It's at three-seventy-five as of the date of, of, of printing this out just a few days ago. As we can see, if we look on a short term, kind of in the last year or so, that number is off the highs. Interest, interest rates have come down on the long end of the curve from their high water mark in this cycle. But I think the important thing to do here is to zoom out and look over the last, you know, we have twenty years on this page. These are interest rates that we haven't been able to get for public entities in the fixed income markets for seventeen, eighteen years. And so it's very important to have this kind of zoom-out, big-picture mindset and say, what can we do then to maximize on the opportunity to lock in these interest rates? Because as we can see, these are, these are rates you see maybe once or twice in your career if we're looking at a continued pattern of this. And so how do we then shift and lock these in while we can?
Lock in now because it's gonna get worse.
So that's the economic side of things. I'll shift gears. I'll start to dive into the actual portfolio. Where's the, where's the investments at today? And then I'll also touch on what are some ideas that we can now do moving forward? So the first thing I have here for us to take a look at is this driving home further to this point of creating budgetary certainty by locking in what we can. So this is a national index of L-GIPS, which are local government investment pools. Locally, that would be Star Ohio for us. Star Ohio is an investment in this index, so we can, we can kind of compare this locally to the Star Ohio example. What this highlights is that in the last few. What this highlights is that in the last few interest rate cycles, when rates top off and start to come down, vehicles like Star Ohio drop very quickly, like I said before. They're going to follow a walk step with the interest rate, the overnight rate set by the Fed, and they'll drop very quickly. Like I said, we've already seen over a percentage, full percentage point drop in Star Ohio since the Fed has ultimately pivoted and changed course. And in the last two cycles, you know, rates went down to zero, and Star was at 0.08 not too long ago, extremely low. Now, again, the Fed does not want to have to push to zero again. I certainly hope that's not where we end up. But we also know that we shouldn't be overly leveraged in a vehicle like that, overly allocated to do a vehicle like that. I want to take that moment, though, to mention Star Ohio, it sounds like I'm dashing it, I'm not. It remains an extremely important piece of the portfolio, and it always will. So that should serve a very important purpose, and that is your liquidity bucket. So Star Ohio is same day or next day accessible in terms of the tax, has extremely short weighted average maturity. And so if you call in before 2:00 P.M., you're able to get your money the same day. If not, it's the next day.
And you've got a very good return in Star Ohio being liquid. Very, yes.
It's been great.
Yeah.
It's been great.
I get it. I get it. They're dropping.
The issue, it was at 5.5%. Now it's below 4.5%.
I get it.
I mean, to be completely transparent, Meter is the investment advisor for Star Ohio. So it's an important piece of our business model. It's an important piece of our portfolios. It'll always make up a piece of our overall recommendation for the investment portfolio. We find ourselves, though, in this situation of how do we right-size? And that's our terminology, is how do we right-size? What do we keep cash liquid? And then what do we start to actually put into the investment portfolio? So quickly, we'll kind of touch base, next page there, of where was the village's portfolio as of end of March? So this is the Meter managed portfolio. I know there's also a Charles Schwab account.
Yes.
We'll take a look at that in combination here, because as I had said earlier, we want to, Meter, we want to have an all-encompassing view of the investment program here in the village. Even though I don't touch the Schwab account, I personally believe it's important, I know it's there, and it's important I know how it's invested at a high level so that I can now make an educated decision for how we tackle the entire environment here at the village. I need to, you know, we need to take that into account when making decisions about what we're doing and about recommendations that we're making. So like I said, this is the Meter portfolio. The cash component, just kind of working our way through the page here, cash, that's Star Ohio. So that's as of end of March, just over 7.6 billion in the Star bucket. Moving on there, a little over 3 million in actual securities. That's your U.S. bank account that Meter advises. So total portfolio that Meter can see and that we will advise on is 10.6, a little over 10.6 million. So weighted average maturity there, 1.46 years, pretty evenly spread across our zero-to-three timeframe that we have access to, and the weighted average yield of the portfolio at 444. So largely a component there, as we've seen continuing to see higher interest rates being purchased and lower interest rates mature out of the portfolio. So simple math there. You can look ahead for the next 12 months, but we have a detailed page that we'll take a look at for projected interest.
So I remember in the conversation that we've had with the company, so the U.S. Treasuries, the U.S. government agencies, and the money market funds, is that what you're saying? Is 45, 54% and the 1% that's what makes up where our money's invested?
That's what makes up the securities, the 3,680,000.
Okay. So the cash in the Star has nothing to do with any of these?
Right.
Star's its own baby out there. This is the investment.
Your asset allocation, that is your securities, that's your investment account that's custody with U.S. Bank.
Which one of those are performing best? Treasuries, the government agencies?
Agencies a little better than Treasuries. And I mean, that's why there's an emphasis in the asset allocation for agencies over Treasuries.
Okay.
As of the last year or so, there's been a spread there that can be earned over Treasuries. I mean, it's the highest level of safety that you can, you know, have access to, the government agencies that are backed by the full faith and credit of the federal government. Of course, they are outlining your policy, only permissible, but a little bit of a spread that can be earned there in agencies over Treasuries. So that's why we're weighted a little heavier as we look at the investments that have been made in recent times. So like I said, that's where we're at end of March. The next page, I think, is where we can have some conversation. Just want to make you all, like I had said, we're bringing everyone up to speed of the conversations that Matt and I have been having, now kind of taking that, expanding it to the rest of council, and bringing everyone up to the same level of conversations that we've been having, especially as it pertains to how do we move forward from here? So kind of slicing and dicing this as we go. This is hypothetical, Meter's recommendation of where we think the portfolio could be moving forward. So cash, you can see quite a big difference here. Taking a good chunk of what's in Star and putting it to work. 2.5 being left behind and left in the Star vehicle to serve as your liquidity reserve. So 2.5 million that you have access to whenever you need it, right there for you overnight. Then taking what we're using from there, which would be roughly $5 million, investing it in the marketplace and locking in the interest rates that are available today.
For how long?
Adding that into what's there. And then also the important piece here, we're looking at Schwab. We're bringing up kind of full picture here.
So you're saying bring all of it into one?
Leave Schwab where it's at. I just want to keep it.
For how long? How long do you want us to tie five, or are you suggesting we tie $5 million like?
Good question, and that's the bottom half of your page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a question.
The light blue, or sorry, yeah, the light blue is where you're at today. That's where your money is currently invested. The dark blue is where we would recommend putting new dollars in the portfolio. So you can see definitely an emphasis on the two- to three-year bucket. That speaks to our belief of let's continue to create as much certainty as possible for the long term. Because like I had said, we're in a position here where the yield curve is flattening, it's returning to a more normal shape, and you're getting to a position where you want to lock in what you can for as long as you can, because as a vehicle like Star, again, extremely important, but we know where it's headed according to our projections. So we want to take our historical examples, because I'm not here to time the market, I'm not here to bet one way or the other exactly where interest rates will land, but I am here to show historically what's happened and say, let's learn from it, and let's make our decisions based off those historical examples.
Matt, I'm sorry. Matt, with the $5 million that we're suggesting that we possibly, I mean, that's just a number thrown out there. Where's that money coming from? Because see, that's going to play a big factor in how we operate as a village, right? So we need to make sure we're considering these things. If it's coming from all water, we better not have an emergency water, is what I'm saying, for two and three years. And that's where you're going to get most of your money. But.
Yeah, the money that's, it's valid point, but the money, like 2.5 million that's in Star, that's not designated like it's from, it's just, it's not designated the water, it's not designated the parks. There is no designation there when it's often the Star Ohio. You don't take each fund, you don't itemize that out when you're moving that $5 million.
So how are we sure that we're not spending water money on any of this?
That is part of the whole accounting, UAN accounting. That keeps it all itemized. You don't have it itemized when it's in any of the buckets. It's not like it's proportioned out. It's just something you don't do in the government accounting.
So it's probably discussion for later, right? Or is that a discussion for today? I mean, that would be one of my concerns, we're taking.
If you want to have.
So if I can ask this, the $7 million then, from what you just, from what I understand, the $7 million, we could spend that on whatever we wanted to and then?
No, not at all.
Exactly. I know that's not, I know that's not what you're saying, but I said it that way for a reason. Because we better be careful what monies we're tying up, is all I'm simply saying, is I think it's very important that we do invest this money, guys. I really do, because as the gentleman's saying, Star Ohio, we're losing money as those interest rates are dropping and we're not locking in. All I'm saying is we need to consider how long do we want to tie this money up for, and then make sure that we understand that we're not going to run into some problems on the back end is the only thing that I would ask you to consider. Now, please, carry on.
Yeah, I think those, you know, those are very legitimate concerns, and that's probably always kind of our immediate feedback when we're looking at taking action like this. So I want to just kind of further elaborate on what this looks like. So we were discussing here, to boil it down simply, take $5 million from Star Ohio, put it to work in the investment program. It'll be tied up, so to speak. It'll be invested across the entire zero-to-three-year timeframe that we have. We can see here, though, a lot of it, yes, is being put to work in the two-to-three-year bucket. However, when we make investments across the distribution here, we make it so that investments are constantly flowing out, ideally monthly. We have maturities in the account, if not very close to that. So what that gives us is a sense of flexibility, so that every month or every other month, there's 100,000, 150,000 that matures in the portfolio. And if Matt says, hey, you know, some things don't look too great in the next few months, we need to pause on reinvesting, then we can let half a million dollars accumulate in the next six, seven, eight months, and you can take it and do what you need to do with it. So we like to maintain this sense of flexibility in the portfolio.
So you could draw some of that down if you had to, you're just not going to get those returns on that investment.
Well, so when it matures, so when you buy a three-year bond, over the next three years, you're getting closer and closer to that maturity date. Ultimately, it matures and you get your funds back. Now, we are always reinvesting the money.
Sure.
In the village's account, but you have the choice to take it if you want it. So that's kind of your first line of defense if you spent, first of all, if you spent your entire 2.5 million in the Star account, that's your safety net, that's your liquidity reserve. If you go beyond that, you have a constant roll-down of maturities, in which I said, we can always reach out and say, hey, I don't like the way things look for the next few months, let's hold off on reinvesting, let's let some cash pile up as things mature. So we have that constant roll-down. And the other piece there being that that constant roll-down, as we can see here, you know, we're looking at almost $3 million maturing in the next year under this hypothetical plan. So I think big picture, you know, you would want to consider the fact that if we're worried about a liquidity issue or having access to enough funds, you would have to spend through essentially $5.5 million in the next 12 months before you ever started talking about selling investments.
What's the family on selling an investment that we're committed to?
It's whatever, it's whatever the market is offering you today. So your bond has a market value that changes daily. And so if you are set to mature 18 months from now in your treasury bond, but you want to sell it now, you can sell it into the marketplace, and someone will buy it off of you. But depending on the rate that you got when you bought it and the rate at today's market, it could, you could have a gain, you could have a loss. It depends on the market.
So there's no penalty, you just, whatever you're selling that.
There's no penalty.
That's, okay. Perfect. So you still have access to the funds in case of an emergency. There's just a, it's not liquid.
Yep, it's not liquid.
There's a process that you're going to have to go through, and you could lose, you could gain.
It's a marketable security. We're always buying investments with the intention to lock, to hold until it's maturity. So that's why this split between cash and investments is really important to agree on in the beginning, because we want to feel confident that when we go out and we make purchases and we lock in these interest rates, that unless something unforeseen comes up, we won't need to access this money. Like I said, like I just went through, there are quite a few fail safes if we find ourselves in a situation where you need that money. But that split's important we get right from the outset. So I'll also kind of leave that as part of our conversation here. This is our recommendation based on everything that we know, but that's not a hard, fast rule. This is an 80/20 split of cash versus investments, but that, it doesn't have to be that way. If 70/30 is the right feeling for the village, I'll do it.
These guys will figure out what they want. They got control.
I think, but the main theme of our conversation being here, that we are turned almost 80/20 in a wrong direction, and we need to put some cash to work. That's our.
Sure. Yes, of course.
All right, so that's the hypothetical portfolio. Like I said, that is, that's bringing us up to speed on the conversations that Matt and I have been having, taking a look at where are we at today, what do we have the ability to do moving forward? So I want to leave that with you all, make sure you have the information there. The last page is just an update on projected interest income. So this is a take it to the bank, this is what you will earn for the life of the portfolio as of the 20th. So as of just yesterday, we have, you know, like I said, pre-up-to-date data here. This is what you will earn in the portfolio. So a few important things here. This does not include Star Ohio. So today, there's a pre-orchance allocation to Star. This is just the U.S. bank account that's advised by Meter. This also assumes no reinvestments. So we're always reinvesting moving forward, we're always in the mindset of doing so. But I think this is just a powerful piece of information for you all to have. When you start to look at moving forward, what can we expect if we're having projects, if, you know, if we're seeing an increase in expenditures in this one area? What do we know we're going to earn, I think, kind of a worst-case scenario in the portfolio? Well, we know that in 2026, you will earn at least $102,575. So nice to have in your back pocket when it comes time to have those planning conversations moving forward.
So if I just want to make sure I understood what you just said. So you said if we, if we do what you recommend, if we move $5 million, we're going to, we can assume we're going to get on what rates are?
This is where you're at today. This is nothing to do with moving money.
So my question is then, where do you guys project us to, what kind of returns are you projecting that we're going to get?
That's where I'm headed next. So given today's interest rates, sliding $5 million into our zero-to-three-year strategy like I highlighted, we're looking at adding somewhere in the ballpark, of course, this is given market rates, so don't quote me exactly to this dollar amount, but we're looking at adding somewhere in the ballpark of about $190,000, $195,000 of interest income a year for the life of the portfolio. So in over the next three years.
19 times 3 is 57, 570,000, something like that, almost $600,000 return.
Over the next three years.
Three years.
Yep. So we can see changing the way this picture looks quite a bit. And that all kind of comes full circle now to, like I had mentioned earlier, the name of the game for us is always going to be to do what we can to create as much budgetary certainty as possible for the village. So let's not be susceptible to interest rate fluctuation. Let's lock in what we can in this environment, knowing that historically speaking, we're at extremely high interest rates. Let's create as much certainty for the future as possible, and doing this slide from cash to investments is how you do that. And you now guarantee yourself a certain amount of income for the next three years.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? Thank you for the time presenting that and done a great job of making it pretty understandable for somebody who doesn't work in your field.
Good, good to hear. Well, Matt has my contact information. I'll leave a couple cards behind if any kind of questions as a follow-up come from today. Like I said, that's our recommendation, but I'm here to make edits as we need.
Mr. Phillips, when, if we decide to invest some money and lock it in and invest it for one to two to three years, how long does that take from pulling the trigger?
Yeah.
Like you said, okay, we want to invest $3 million. How long does that take for that to go into effect and start realizing those?
Matt gives me a call and says, we want to move this money, we're putting $3 million into the investment portfolio. I'll make sure Matt has the template to send money from Star to U.S. Bank. It has to come from Matt, his account. So he'll do that, he'll initiate the transfer. You'll probably see those funds show up same day if you do it early enough in the day, if not next day, you'll see the money there. And then we'll be able to execute those trades as soon as we see the money, and they could, they'll probably settle over the following two to three days. And so we're looking at kind of start to finish here a business week to get all of this.
And you're saying that, and you're saying that we want to make this move before the end of May? Is that what I understand?
Well, I think that there's an important distinction there, is like I said earlier, I'm not here to time the market. So there's two sides of this, right? There's what do we expect to happen, but there's also what can the village reasonably do? And those two have to have a marriage.
The reason why I asked that question, Mr. Phillips? The reason why I asked that question, Mr. Phillips, is because we don't meet all the time. We have to let him know what we're gonna do. How much time is of the essence, right, I guess is what I'm saying.
So the next, so if we're talking about interest rates moving, the next opportunity for them to come down is that May.
Yes, that's what I thought, that's what you said, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, and so we're taking a look at, we don't need to wait, we're ready to do it. Then I would say that's a reasonable goal, is let's do this before May, so that you know, you've taken care of your understanding of cash, you feel confident that you can make this move, then we know, we know what we're expecting, so then let's, let's take that information and do the best decision that we can.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
What's the date of the meet, their meeting in May?
Um, you put me on the spot. It's the second week of May, and then I think the second week, second or third week of June.
So, why that's important to us is for when we need to make this decision, right? That's, that's why we're asking these questions on the, on the dates.
Yep.
Because if we don't come up with something tonight, our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Right.
And that's, we would have to call another special meeting to take action, right? And then our official meeting would be second Tuesday of May, so, so we're talking, the third week of May would be when this whole transaction would probably go through.
Yeah, but you're, you're, like you said.
We could lose a half percent.
Looking at the historical figures and the way things are moving and what you've heard from the Fed, then you're really not expecting them to make a move on the interest rate.
Yeah, we look, we look at where things are at today, the marketplace does not expect a cut in May. Of course, we know how quickly things can change.
Why?
But right now, yes, if we look at kind of where are the odds, it doesn't seem like May, it seems more like June.
But we know that they're like, they're not going to change. So where they're at today, they're not changing, at least the quickest they were gonna move would be in May.
Yep.
Correct? They're not gonna move from today till, till they meet in May. They may meet in May and say, hey, let's drop it that quarter percent that we talked about.
Yeah.
Because what, the estimate, we talked about this a couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, they're anticipating a drop three times, a quarter percent each time, is from what was told from the experts, right? And Mr. Phillips, you're on the, now they're saying possibly two times. Is, yeah, it's just uncertain.
Two, three, four cuts again, generally speaking, it's coming.
But, but one cut, if it happened in May, one cut, that's going to be a quarter percent that we're gonna lose. Or seven million dollars that we've got invested in, in Meter. Am I understanding that?
Yeah, if you want to get really deep into the weeds.
No, no, I don't.
Star, Star has a rollover of about thirty-some days, so it's not overnight that you're going to see the Star rate drop. It'll take a month or a little over, so, you know, keep that in mind as well. When the Fed pulls the trigger, it's not like tomorrow, you're twenty-five basis points lower. It does, it is going to take a month or two to see that fully play out in, in Star.
So we, so if we made a decision the second Tuesday of, of May, and Matt called you that Wednesday and said, we're ready to May, here's what we were wanting to do, you don't think that that would affect anything at this point of where we stand today?
Probably not.
Okay, there you go. So we got until second Tuesday.
So we're going until, until considering.
Yep. So is this something, are, are we looking to make a decision tonight?
Don't you need to kind of look to see what we need to project to put back that we might have coming up?
Well, there's a lot of projects that we could, we could be putting, but, but the biggest project that I would say, it, it, it would be at least a year planning, right? So, I mean, and, and we're probably not going to do anything for at least probably two years, I would say. And then, like, that's why I was asking the questions that I was asking, when I talked to the department heads, I mean, guys, there's a lot of things that we need to do, right? But those aren't going to take place in 2025. The, the planning could start taking place in 2025, right? And we may not even be able to pull the trigger in 2026, I would hope that we could. That's why I was asking the questions earlier, when I'm talking to the department heads and the, you know, the wish list things that we, you know, that we would like to do. But we don't want to lose money while we are just sitting and waiting, right? So worst-case scenario, we lock in for a year, right? Lock in for a year and take a look at it then. I wouldn't recommend that. I would say, I would, anything we do, I think we lock in for, for three years, right? I would think that's, that's, in my opinion. But that's up to you guys, that's, but now, the question is, how much, right? How much do we want?
Answer two questions, when and how much.
Well, I think we can answer the when. The when is no later than the second Tuesday of May. If, am I to understand that? So that question's already been answered.
I was clarifying that.
Okay. Oh, and then this, and then I guess we could see how, you know, you guys do some thought to how much you guys.
Is there a figure you want us to think about, Matt?
I mean, the page fifteen shows it to me fairly well, and he kind of explained it. My initial thought was to have more cash than what this proposes, but that was my initial thought, that was probably a month ago. After thinking about it, I became more comfortable with the two point five million. Before the, this is the first time I seen, like, the hypothetical distribution, you know, that you show it in the dark blue. That could be shifted one way or the other, like we're discussing right now. I mean, but to directly answer your question, it looks like a pretty good proposal here. I just would, on the cash, I just, my knee personally, I don't want to see it really go any lower than that. But that's just personal.
Can you put part of it in for three years and part of it in for a year?
Yeah, so this will go, so to be clear, this five million, this is going to be spread across the entire plan here, across the entire zero to three year timeframe. A lot of it is in that two to three year bucket. But, you know, if, if we need to rein that in a little bit, if you want to say, hey, I want at the most thirty percent of our money in the two to three year bucket, we can do that. I mean, if there are certain things that you have, you know, benchmarked or earmarked that you want to, you want to reel this back a little bit, we can.
Sure.
But this, you know, this money will be spread across the entire horizon.
For how long did you say? The whole, what's the entire?
Three years is the longest we've.
Right, that's, I thought, I thought you said five years, that's right.
Oh, I, I might have, so code is five. We are restricted to three at the village.
So if I understand that right, then there will be some one-year investments, so that way you can, that's where you get your maturity, so that way we always have available.
So, so if we were to take action on this, we would have a little over three million dollars coming due in the next 12 months. That, that you have access to say, don't reinvest and give it back to us if you wanted to, if something came.
And we've realized the full gains of that at that time.
Yep, it matures, it's yours, you get the funds, plus, you know, yeah, if you're due any gain at the end, that, you know, if you bought it at a discount, that's yours.
So at that point, we have to see what?
Then at that point, we still have the two point five
Right.
that we could, we could take the cash, that we could take.
Yeah, that's not going anywhere, that would just be added to that.
That's why I said it would get us a total within the next one year, we would have five million dollars if we needed.
And guys, we still got money coming in, that's what we've got now, right? We still got revenue coming in, we're not, but Jim, we've been blessed, we're, we're doing pretty good as a village, for as small as we are. Especially when I'm out there talking to other villages, I don't want to delay with this meeting any longer than we already have, so.
You say they meet on the thirteenth, is that what you said?
I'll give you the exact date, I'll look it up and I'll email Matt.
On just, I mean, we don't want to miss it, but it can wait until our meeting, our official meeting.
We'll have thirty days to.
Yeah, but like, like Mr. Phillips said, even, even if, even if the rate drops, it doesn't affect, so the only thing that it would affect here, Ms. Hefner, is the cash, which is the Star Ohio. So that's the only, that's the only one that that would affect, am I correct in saying that? So what it would do, where Star Ohio is right now, where we're getting this, the four-point-whatever return on our investment, we would take that money and lock it into that four-point-whatever. That's not going to move, we're, so rates are going to drop, so we are going to continue to get four-point-whatever percentage return on that. Even when that money's, that's what this whole conversation's about, is making sure that we take that liquid money that's not, we're not getting as much return on. It's gonna go down, we know that.
Right.
But we can take a portion of that and lock it in right now for three years, and we're gonna realize those same gains now, knowing that they're not going to go down.
Okay, so we don't have to.
Yeah, so, so we're that same, yes, ma'am. Yes, and we should be, we should be pretty, pretty solid. Oh, because once that, once that rate, if it did drop, it's not going to hit Star Ohio for three to four weeks.
Okay.
It's, correct. So, yeah, I think we're pretty confident and we should be okay by it, if we have a decision.
Do I should just add that to the agenda for?
Do we want to have that for committee of the whole discussion, or should we, because?
I think we ought to.
Well?
Because we can ask Matt, because he'll be, you're monitoring this all the time.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that it's gonna be, I mean, after tonight's discussion, I don't know that it's gonna be much more drawn out, right?
I think it's your recommendation of how much, shouldn't we?
Tim, do you want that added to committee of the whole?
I will not be at the committee of the whole, I'll be on vacation, but I can communicate with Tim.
No, 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 that's certainly, that's okay, but I don't know, I don't know if we have to put it on the committee of the whole, only because I think we've got most of the details here, right? I mean, the only question is, like Ms. Hefner said, is how much?
Right.
I think we've got, so.
We all have plenty of time to think about. Let that number look.
Right, right, there's the, the portfolios. Anything else for us, Mr. Phillips?
That's all.
Thank you so much for your time.
Like I said, if you have any follow-up, let me know, I'm here to help.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. There's a couple of my cars for anyone else that wants to give me a shout, myself on there, perfect, if you need us. I appreciate the time, Tim, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, you guys have a good evening.
You too.
Yeah, I mean, I talked, I did about the same thing. I, I brought it up to him, you can talk louder if you want, but we'll talk about it.
Well, I don't want to embarrass anybody.
Yeah, well, basically what the mayor was asking was, why go with Meter over Charles Schwab? Because when I did the, my audit or analysis of, of 2024, Meter was lower than Schwab.
Or our returns?
No. Could have asked Gabe when he was here, but I, I brought this up to him about the return. His initial response was, it was basically the administrator of our account before him, our account rep. But with that being said, I'm impressed with Gabe, and a lot of it is we need somebody that's paying attention, you know, basically at all times. So to answer your, you know, the point, why go with them when they're the lowest? The expectation is that he's not going to be the lowest, you know, that's, that is really my best answer. We want somebody that's going to make better decisions than what was made previously on to gain the most.
So that was my concern, exactly my concern when we had these conversations, when we met with those guys. Because I already asked one of the guys this question, but I think it was our senior representative, and it wasn't him. Was I with you?
You were with me with Charles Schwab.
Charles Schwab.
And I really liked that, yeah, I really liked the representative we have for Charles Schwab.
So it's just a matter of they was paying more attention to the markets than Meter was. I think with that, with their representative.
Yeah, they were a half a percent apart.
Because that's what I was thinking, because my thought to ask when I asked that question is, they're working in the same realm, right? So how could one get a better return than the others? Other than exactly was the answer that we just got, that you're confident, Gabe's not going to let that happen with us.
I am, you know, but you gotta, as you know, you always gotta keep your eyes.
Yeah.
Your eye, who's got the hands on the wheel, which essentially that's me, but yet they're the experts, you know, they, they gotta, you gotta, but you gotta hold them accountable.
Well, we don't pay, and I know you, and I appreciate that, um, yes, that's exactly right, and I'm saying this with all due respect. Like, we, we don't want you watching the markets, and that, you know what I mean? I, I hope you know what I'm saying. We want you taking care of all this for us, right? Um, but you're doing a great job in that, but that's why we would pay them to do that, I would hope that they're doing.
So did Schwab put a portfolio together for us?
He, Aaron, the mayor was in on the report, but he did not create a full, long
Not like that.
presentation.
But, but I guess that's why I'm asking that, not necessarily to drag this out, is to say, why would we want to, but then that was a good answer. We're saying, because maybe somebody wants to pay attention as much as this on the company, but we, we believe that's going to be rectified going forward. I think is the answer for that.
Sure.
If you're saying that, if you're saying that, I'm very confident and believing that, I'm one hundred percent.
Now, naturally, like, meeting with Gabe or meeting with gentlemen from Charles Schwab, each of them made their pitch to move it all to me. Uh, like, you know, limited.
Yes.
They, I mean, that's, that's just part of making money and sales, I, I wasn't comfortable with that. But maybe someday have them all in one, but I really don't know, you know, like, how do you know who's the best one? It makes more work for me to have two different, but at least you can kind of see, you know, what if, what if Duvo to go with Meter and Charles, you start looking, boy, Charles Schwab really continues to do better than, you know, then you might, that's where you're at, that, the direction you're headed, then you might move, maybe we ought to start.
That's exactly right.
Well, in a year, we can take.
And as we get our maturities, we can move.
Exactly right, and that's what I thought when we, when we brought that up about one year, so. Give some thought, guys, there's a lot of new information coming to you guys that you guys have never been a part of in the past, is, is this in-depth? So just give some thoughts to it, and what we, what we would like to recommend in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. Phillips, but I appreciate you guys for getting us this.
Okay, um, just, yes, thank you, Matt, for all your work on this. Moving on, there's nothing else with our investments. So we're trying to get the Henry Township, North Baltimore JED board all established and up and running where it's supposed to be. Um, I know that I shared this with you, but I don't think we took any formal action. Um, I would ask, because I wanted to talk to Matt and Josh, Josh agreed that he would be the villagers' rep if it's.
We voted on that, didn't we?
Did we vote on that? I cannot remember if we did or not, so you guys already approved that?
I voted no.
You voted no?
Oh, yes, he did. He voted no.
It all comes back now, yeah.
We wasn't sure, so we just wanted to make sure we captured that so that, um, so that he can be forward with setting a schedule to get this thing going.
Yep.
Thank you very much, guys. Well, since that's been, that's done and already taken care of, is that last one, it is? And we probably could have got with you back in, just asked.
That's okay.
We couldn't remember, so we just thought we'd throw it. All right, let's move on, then, there's, uh, on the new legislation, resolutions, motions of business. Uh, just before we get to that, I want to thank you guys very much for coming in on this special meeting, right? We really appreciate it. And with that being said, I'll move on. Ordinance twenty, uh, ordinance 2025 dash one zero, an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the Fire Department for services provided rendered by, for the city of North Baltimore Fire Department authorizing, authorizing a contract with Recovery USA LLC and declaring an emergency. I think we already talked about this, right? We shared this with you guys, what was going on, it's almost like, um, Great Lakes for EMS, uh, these guys are, will be doing that for fire.
What kind of motion do you need?
I need a, I need a motion to, uh,
Suspend?
to suspend the second and third reading.
So vote second.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the second, third reading, any discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Boebert?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, moving on to the road salt for 2025, there's some changes that was made this year as far as who we're going to be contracting with. We've always went with Morton, um, we're gonna go with, we're looking to go with ODOT this year, a little bit of a price decrease, if I'm understanding that correct. Possibly, Matt, do I, might understand that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
That's the purpose of it.
That's the purpose.
Did you get any costs yet from them?
No, you, that's, that's the downside. The SODOT salt program's not new, it's something that's been around for a long time. So basically, you commit to so many tons and, uh, through this program, and so then you're becoming part of a bigger purchase. So, yeah, bigger pool. Uh, this past year, it would have saved a substantial amount of money. Now, I would, you know, I would say nine out of ten years, you're going to, there might be that one year where you would have been better off to purchase it later through Morton, but, yeah, just, that's, that's the general idea. It's delivered. It's delivered, uh, well, it's currently delivered on site, but it still will be, so there's no additional fees.
And it's an emergency because of the date of the signing?
The date is May second, and then, we've been, I've been talking to Josh Long about it some, and, uh, just watched the website. They just brought it out April second or April third, so, and they just, they even say, and the idea is to pass the resolution tonight, but the, as long as they have the tons before May second, but we presume we should have everything.
So, um, I, we spend more salt than I, than I thought, but, um, I know that we didn't use salt in the past, like, I would like to have seen it used. Um, I've watched people slide right through stop signs. Um, it was, it, I mean, we was very, very conservative with our salt, and it really upset me, to be honest with you, as a council member. Um, because, you know, when our elderly people are trying to get around, or our young kids are trying to get to school, that, you know, we want to make the roads as safe as possible. Do we all agree with that, without wasting? Uh, I think we do, right? Because, you know, I talked to Josh about what we used last year, if we get that back, this, that same amount this year, I think it's going to be around twenty-one thousand dollars that we're paying for salt, guys. Salt is more expensive than I thought, but, um, but we had a lot of ice this year. Uh, but I don't want Josh to be conservative with the salt. But obviously, I don't want him to be wasteful with it, but we want to make sure our streets are safe. And I'll tell you, we've gotten a lot of compliments this year of the job that they did, keeping our roads safe. So, and, and I kind of labored that a little bit, but, um, I just wanted to share with you guys some of the conversations that I had with Josh and, and a little bit with Matt, so.
Motion to suspend second.
Hold on, I gotta read it first. I gotta read it. Resolution number oh eight, 2025, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2025.
Motion to suspend second, third reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the second, third reading. Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Bookright?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt as an emergency?
Second.
Mr. Richmond, Ms. Hefner? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
C.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt as an emergency?
Second.
Mr. Richmond, Ms. Hefner? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
C.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
You're going to get an ice, I think, you might want to be careful. Um, moving on, resolution number ten, 2025, a resolution accepting the bid of Holon Break Excavating. Did I miss one?
Mister, oh, nine, twenty-five.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, thank you, guys. Uh, moving on to resolution number zero nine, 2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Public Consulting Group LLC for services related to the ambulance supplemental payment program. This is the one that Matt shared with us, that we got to get on a waiting list, once we do, it looks like it's going to generate about twenty-one thousand dollars here, minus whatever fees that come associated with.
Is that ten percent?
Ten percent.
Right, the fees.
Yeah. Um, just to bring everybody up to speed.
I'll make a motion to suspend the.
Second, third reading. Motion was made by Ms. Hefner to suspend the second, third reading, second by Mr. Engard, any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Saltis? Oops, Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
And Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt as an emergency.
Yes, second. Thank you! I need to pull that real quick. There's a motion on the floor, a second. Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Are those already modified, or, or in the original? Moving on to resolution number ten, 2025, which the next couple are the reason why we're here tonight. A resolution accepting the bid of Holon Break Excavating Incorporated, authorizing and directing the village administrator to execute a contract for the improvement of East Broadway Street, Pro Bro Street, from Main Street to Rudolph Road. P I D project, what is it?
Project ID.
They have a project ID number, uh, one one six four two six in the village of North Baltimore. I get a motion to suspend the second, third reading?
So vote.
Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt as an emergency? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution number twelve, 2025, a resolution approving the selection of OHM advisors to provide construction administration and inspection services for the.
You missed one again.
Come on, Patterson.
Eleven.
You got this.
Resolution, moving on to resolution number eleven, I apologize, one one two zero two five, a resolution accepting the bid of Vernon Nagel Incorporated, authorizing and directing the village administrator to execute a contract for the construction of a replacement single-speed positive pre-stress concrete box beam bridge on Rocky Ford Creek on East Water Street. Project ID number one one six zero five four in the village of North Baltimore. I will entertain a motion to suspend the second, third readings, please.
So vote.
Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Bookright?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt as an emergency, please?
So vote. Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright? Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Those are the two contractors, just so everybody knows, for the two big projects coming up in 2025. Now, we're going to move on to the inspections, we have paper inspection administration on both those, just to let you guys know. Moving on to resolution number twelve, 2025, a resolution approving the selection of OHM advisors to provide construction administration and inspection services for the improvement of East Broadway Street. Project ID number eleven, one one six four two six, authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement. Can I get a motion to?
Make a motion to suspend second, third reading.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Is everything on schedule for all of this?
Yes.
That would be a good question for this gentleman, he is our guy, that, that's, he's the one in charge. We have to have one person in charge, uh, that takes care of all that, on behalf of the village. Uh, I'm thinking about next year, taking those same courses when I get laid off. Anybody can do it on, um, like, there, it's like nineteen hours.
About that, yep.
Of training.
If you fail, though, the game gets you over.
But it's construction. I'm sure to fail. Okay, I apologize, so, just kind of, um, yeah, any other discussion? Um, vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Cook, I'm so sorry. Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt as an emergency.
Thank you. Vote when ready, please.
We have second.
Yes, Mr. Engard, second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
We.
I was going to go. He's tri-lingual.
No wonder she doesn't want to.
Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to resolution number thirteen, 2025, a resolution appro, I didn't skip one, did I?
No.
Okay. Resolution number thirteen, 2025, a resolution approving the selection of American Structure Incorporated to provide construction administration and inspection services for the replacement of the East Water Street Bridge. Project ID number eleven, six, zero, five, four, authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement. I get a motion to suspend the second, third readings, please?
So vote. Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Yes.
Yes, please.
That's the one, Paul Road and Broadway, that bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, Water Street, that's true. Paul Road and Broadway now?
No, I don't.
No, we're talking about Water Street Bridge.
My brain jumped, thanks for that.
Right, yeah, the Water Street Bridge.
Okay.
That's the one that's shut down. Any other discussion? Vote when ready to suspend the second, third reading?
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to adopt as an emergency? As an emergency?
Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ms. Bookright?